You're listening to Earnestly Speaking, the only weekly podcast that covers friends, foes, and anything that goes. And now for your badass host, Ernest Owens.
And we're back for another episode of Earnestly Speaking with your host, Ernest Owens, myself. Oh my goodness, y'all. I, uh, this past weekend was everything and then some. Um, I was not expecting for Baltimore to be one of my favorite cities to travel in America. I have to say, I was wildly impressed. Now, I understand that based on the videos you all saw over the past weekend, I must say, please kids, don't try this at home. We had so much fun. The Lip Brothers, you know, we, you know, this was our first like boys' trip, you know, out of Philly. Um, and we were kept debating about what we want to do for a year. You know, we was like, oh, should we go to, um, you know, Atlantic City, New York? And I was like, then we had conversations about DC. And then, you know, things kind of came together and Baltimore just seemed like it made sense. Like New York, it's, it's just overrated, overpriced. We didn't understand what it was giving. DC just seems like a stretch and DC is also ridiculously high. Um, I mean, I think about Atlantic City, I always go to Atlantic City with Mr. Johnson, and I've just kind of done Atlantic City a lot already. So for me, it just did not make sense to go there. Cause I'm actually going to be back in AC later on, actually next couple of weeks. I love Atlantic City, but I was like, what is there for us to do? Um, and then it was just Baltimore and I had went already two times, um, this year. I had the book signing there, which was great. It was a quick, you know, overnight stay. Then of course Amanda and Joe, um, they, you know, had their engagement celebration at the Penderi. I was like, you know, just looking at the view, I was like, Baltimore is, okay, I see it. And so it just made sense. And so it also made sense because it was so much flexibility and everything. So we just said, let's, let's turn Baltimore up. Let's do Baltimore in the most like extravagant way. And so we, you know, had some great, um, opportunities. Atlas Restaurant Group, um, had a bunch of great restaurants and then we ended up hearing that Lock Bar is coming to Philly. So that was crazy. And then we went to a lot of great restaurants that was connected with them. I feel like Atlas Restaurant Group is going to be like the So, the, the So, the Sochen, um, I'm thinking about who else, I'm like the Steven Starr, Shostin, all of them, all the big like restauranters, um, that are in Philly that are there. I feel like Atlas Group has potential to come to Philly and do that. That's just my take. Um, based on a variety of restaurants they have and how different they are and how unique and cool, I think they have potential to come to Philly. I mean, Lock Bar is coming, but you know, some of the other places we went to had the same potential. I mean, there was, um, the watershed, which was incredible for brunch. We went to, um, Monarch. Oh my God. And there was a speakeasy called the Elk Room that was connected to it. And that was wonderful. Fine dining with a little bit of show, which was great. And then Elk Room was like a speakeasy that's connected to Monarch. And we went in there and it was like live music. It was like a little private little party vibe. That was dope. Um, what else did I go to that I really liked? I loved the Chop Shack. I always like, it's a weird name. It's called Chop Shack and that was great. Nice outdoor waterside situation. It was a vibe. Um, we went to a lot of places. Max Simone, which was a connected to the Four Seasons in Baltimore, which by the way, the Four Seasons in Baltimore is a hit. I wasn't expecting to be that nice, but it was dope. They had a huge, like, I mean, it was huge. And it was like a, there was like everything there. Like Lock Bar is connected to the Four Seasons, um, in Baltimore. Um, there also is a place called The Bygone, which we went for a nightclub experience and it was connected to Four Seasons and that was amazing. But you can listen to all of the thoughts we had about Baltimore and the restaurants and all that good jazz and some other things on this, on a special edition of Earnestly Speaking, which is now available. So many of you have already been listening, but if you have not, check out the bonus section with the special edition episodes. Um, if you're on Apple Podcasts, there's like a section for bonus episodes. It is a bonus episode from me to you or from us to you. Um, for the first time ever, the Lip Brothers do a special joint podcast episode. We talk about influencer culture. We talked about Baltimore and the restaurants and the great foods. And we talk about so much stuff. It's like a combination of like inspirational, inspirational like chat and also just industry drama and all that chat. And also we do a fun thing where we talk about what our favorite restaurants are, what restaurants we feel we did, we don't like, and what restaurants we feel like is overrated. And you're going to be shocked by everyone's answers. So it's me, Josh, of course Josh eats Philly, uh, George, Gio's Table, and of course my bestie Jamarcus. All four of us Lip Brothers, we do this special episode. It is available. It's called Lip Brothers Takeover Baltimore. It should be able to find, it's been great. Some of you have already been asking us questions and I did ask, I did ask questions that you all sent me in IG, the DMs. Some of y'all didn't know we were doing a special episode. We were hinting at it, but for whatever reason, like I want to say about three or four of you all, cause you just listened to the podcast a little too closely and you, you peep on little things I've been hinting, you just was like, what did some of y'all say? Like, oh, just in case you all do an episode, I want to ask these questions. And so some of you all did send us questions because you all, since we were going to do something and we did, and it was going to be a surprise, but it was a surprise and you all sent us questions anyway. And so thank you all for that, but we did ask, I think we asked all the questions. It wasn't too many, but we did ask all those questions that you all had about restaurants and food. And so the idea about which restaurants did we like and not like, someone asked that and we answered it honestly. Our answers are very different for different reasons. It's spicy. Some of y'all are going to be shocked about what we say. Some of y'all are going to be like, I knew it. And some of y'all are going to be like, wow, I didn't, I didn't even see that coming. So please check it out. Um, it's going to be a really fun episode, um, indeed. And it's another way. So for some of y'all who can't get enough of Earnestly Speaking, uh, you got plenty of content to listen to this week. You know, I did not leave y'all out here hungry. Uh, but it was great. Uh, phenomenal. I, I really loved Baltimore down. I really do. And I know some of you are like asking me and y'all always do this. When I go traveling, I promise you all, I call the locals. I talk to people from Baltimore. Not people who aren't, if those who are not from Baltimore, who are from Baltimore, look, I, I ran this itinerary by someone close to me named Joe, honey. Like Joe literally told me, he looked and said, oh, we're good. We like y'all being taken care of. Like this is a trip. Like these are some spots. Like he was like, he, he, he looked at. I had a couple of other friends that I know from Baltimore. They was like, okay, you know, he told me some other things and I told them, listen. That's another conversation that is not going to be on here. But what I will say, we was at a historical landmark that in Baltimore, um, we were at the area where, you know, if you all watch Zoos and you've been watching Krishan Blue Show, okay, some of y'all have not watched it. I get it. Well, if you have watched, it's iconic scene where the families are fighting, her family, his family, all them getting into it. That parking lot area outside of the Four Seasons, I didn't realize that she was staying in the Four Seasons. One of my rooms looked like her room. I don't think we had the exact room, but it, it was the same Four Seasons and they got into it right outside. That is historical landmark in Baltimore history. I was, I was, I was not ready. What I loved about Baltimore and also at this part is that it doesn't feel segregated in the restaurant scene. At least the restaurants we went to were really nice and there was diversity. It was black. There's a lot of black women in Baltimore, like a lot of black women. Like I just remember there was just groups of aunties out there eating crab legs. It was just like a thing. Um, and there was lots of guys too. Um, but it was very like diverse, very, very diverse in Baltimore, at least where we were at. And we saw a lot of couples and things and people just, you know, take a girl out, get a crab legs. That's all it takes seems like in Baltimore. That was like the trend we noticed that every time we went to restaurants, it was a pretty girl with a guy eating crab legs. And I think that's what it is. Like you want to go out for crab legs? I feel like that's the energy in Baltimore. Like that's the way to a woman's heart. I guess in Philly is cheesesteaks maybe? Or, or, um, hoagies? I don't know. What, what, what does it, what does it take to get a girl out to go to Philly? I mean, do they, anyway, uh, but it seemed like Baltimore crab legs was what was happening or, or, or a good crab cake. Um, you know, but Baltimore Larry Lynn had it going on. They had it definitely going on. So shouts to them. It was a fabulous time. I definitely would go again. 10-10, highly recommend. Um, yeah, it was, it was dope. And I talk more about Baltimore. We talk more about Baltimore on the episode. So I don't want to repeat myself or say more. Listen to the episode. Okay, sidebar. One thing I will say, sidebar. Okay, crushes? That is fun. I never heard about a crushes until I went to Baltimore. I know. But this crush culture in Baltimore is everything. So every menu you went to, everything was like, there was like cocktail options and crushes. And crushes are this, these drinks that Jamarcus best described it on the podcast. It's like, this is the drinks we was making in college, but we just didn't add ice and we did not know that this was a thing. So basically crushes are like a vodka or liquor, but typically vodka. Um, you put lots of triple sec, which I love, and then you add some like cranberry juice or orange juice or grapefruit juice, but normally orange and cranberry juice. And then you top it with Sprite, but you have it in some chilled ice. And that situation together combined, it's a doozy. I love it. It was, it was incredible. But like, it was funny because we were just like, this tastes so formidable. We could have put our finger on it. Um, but we talked more about that on that episode. So listen to the bonus episode, the special edition episode of Earnestly Speaking to find out more about that. But moving along, um, Monday, you know, as you all listening, while you all are driving to where you have to go, you're probably, I am headed back to class. Class is in session, baby. I, Professor Ernest is back. Okay. I am back with the jump off. Um, as Lil Kim says, I'm back to teaching my students. They're getting ready, freshman seminar. My book is a course. It's everything. So I am back as Professor Ernest for the fall semester, getting ready to teach these students. Summer is fine. The dog days of summer are clearly upon us at this point. Like it's, it just is. It's upon us. Like we were thinking that we were going to be able to get away from all the craziness, but actually we're, you know, we're just, you know, we're just, uh, you know, we're just chilling. Um, but it's interesting because summer went by so fast, but I, I just, I love, I, I love summer. I mean, summer's not official. Like to me, summer is over after Labor Day. So there's still some more time to play. But class is back in session over here at Chaney. It seems like other schools too are having class back in session. I need to, I didn't even, it didn't even hit me. I'm like, oh snap, my, my, my brother is about to go back to simple. Like where did time go? I was so used to, you know, him being an intern over at city council and now he's back in class again. I'm like, wow, it really did happen. Cause I'm noticing everyone's, you know, my, I'm still, I'm still like in summer mode. I feel like this, this upcoming week is like the final time to really get it down in the summer, I suppose. Um, you know, even though for me, again, Labor Day is that date, but you know, my students are in class, so they got assignments. They got papers, all that. But I'm excited to be back. The coolest thing ever. So y'all, y'all know how to, anybody who's ever been a professor or have worked in higher ed knows that your schedule is not your schedule until you actually walk in the day of. Sometimes it's like that. It don't matter what school you at. Let me tell y'all, okay? This is crazy, but it's also great. So my courses for my class, my registration increased. I have more sections to teach. And the students that, I thought I had only one session, but then they, sections, they increased it. The popularity of this, this class now is tremendous. We have other instructors, professors, teaching the course across the departments because we have so many freshmen coming in. I think freshman is the highest base of students. And then after that, the numbers kind of trickle down, which makes sense or don't make sense, you know, transfers and all that stuff. But like the class is increasing. So the, the crazy part is that traditionally I was going to be teaching Mondays and Wednesdays. So I was going to have to be going from going up to Chaney, which is a little bit of a distance from where I live. I live in West Philly, but it's a little bit of a distance, um, because it's not, Chaney is not in Philadelphia, but it's like in the surrounding like counties and whatnot. It's like a 45 minute drive or something like that. It's, it's, it's got a distance, but making that trip is, it is time because you take, it's time to go up and it's time to come back. And it's like, it's, it's an investment in time. So you have to block out, you know, and scheduling. So in my mind, I was like, oh my goodness, I'm going to have to teach, you know, I gotta do all these different things. This is how I'm going to make time for this in my schedule. Well, the blessing and the good thing is is that because of the increases in courses, I was able to swap out a section, um, to teach. So I'm teaching multiple sections on Mondays and I don't have to go back any other time of the week. Oh my God. I don't think y'all understand how exciting this is, but to be a professor and to teach your classes back to back to back and just do them in one day and I have to do any other day of the week is a godsend. So thank goodness. I mean, I didn't mind doing Mondays and Wednesdays. I've done that in the past. It's, it's, you gotta do what you gotta do. When I first started at Chaney, I was teaching a class Monday, Wednesday and Friday. That was intense. After that, it was Mondays and Wednesdays. Now it's just all Mondays this semester. I was able to pull it off and it worked out. It was, it was dope. God's kiss, you know, just, you know, chef's kiss, I mean, but it was incredible. So I'm happy. I want to only be teaching on Monday because now with my, you know, upcoming fall book tour, um, I'm going to be able to now have the freedom to, you know, take trips and book things on Wednesdays, um, in other cities. Um, because at first it seemed like, like I have certain schedules and dates I can't miss, but now I have the flexibility to do things on Wednesdays now in addition to Thursdays and whatnot. So my schedule's opened up more and that's great for my agent because they're going to be doing all that. My publicist, they're going to be planning the schedule and like, I hit them up on Fridays, like, listen, this is the schedule. They were like, wow, this is great. It's going to open up more dates to, to go to other cities and things. So I'm excited about that. So I have more free, I have more freedom. It works out. Mondays mean, don't bother me. I take, listen to my people, listen. Monday before 1:00 PM, don't even call me. Drop a text, I might respond, but from the morning till 1:00, I'm, I'm teaching. Professor Ernest is teaching. So looking forward to that. It's really great. Um, other things that went down this week, oh my God, so much went down, um, outside of Baltimore. Um, the Philly Influencer Awards, I attended, as you all know, and of course, one of your favorite Lip Brothers, Josh Eats Philly won Food Influencer of the Year. Philadelphia Magazine, um, put on the event. Um, this is the second year they've done the event, but this year was in awards. Last year was just a soray. Um, and because of the success and the buzz of last year's event, they decided to do an awards this year and it was quite the show. Um, I mean, we had so many liquor sponsors. I mean, I remember Bacardi, we had Grey Goose. We had some type of champagne and bubbly popping all night. It was a dope, I think it was Copa, Copa wines, Francis Copa wines. They were there. I tried the Hugo spritz, which everyone's been talking about. It's all right, y'all. We had, we had Saint Germain. Saint Germain was there. That was fabulous. So the Hugo, okay, so the Hugo spritz, for those who want to know, there are people who don't like Aperol spritz, which is weird. I mean, I love Aperol spritz. Amanda doesn't like it, so she thinks other people don't like it. There must be a group of people who may not like it, but clearly it's, it has been the drink of the summer and I love a good, uh, Aperol spritz, you know, with some great sliced fruit and just make it cute. And, um, on a hot summer day, it was so fine. Italian, Italian treats. Um, you know, they have, uh, Caribbean, Tunisian treats. This is an Italian treat, the Aperol spritz is. I love them. I, I can't get enough of them. Me and Mr. Johnson love them together. Jamarcus likes them. I don't know who don't like them. Mm-hmm. I think Gio's like iffy about them. People think they got a bitterness to them. I'm like, but they're sweet and it's, it's grown and sexy. Anywho, so she doesn't like Aperol spritz. But the Hugo spritz is for people who don't like the Aperol spritz apparently, because it basically includes, um, Prosecco. Um, Prosecco, Saint Germain and club soda. And also served in a glass, a champagne glass, not champagne glass, a big glass, a generous wine glass of ice. And then you pour in the Prosecco and then you pour in the Saint Germain and then you add the club soda and then you add slices of fruit or mint, if you want to add as garnish. Now I had it. It gives basic bitch, y'all. I'm sorry. It's giving basic for me. I don't, I mean, the people I've seen drinking it is definitely the description of who you would imagine. Yes, it's them. But like I, 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 I personally was just kind of like, it's okay. It's not a bad drink. I, I tried to make it at home. Um, but I don't do club soda like that. So I had to give my own little remix, but I feel like my remix tastes better than what the hell I had. But it was cool because we're always at the influencer awards and, you know, everything. It was dope to be able to try it in person, but nonetheless, it was, it was, it was all open bar. So I mean, are we complaining about open bar? No, we're not. Um, there were so many other drinks that I had that night. I just really was thinking Cosmos and champagne. Um, and then we went to Punchline to celebrate more. We had the after party for, for Josh and we was at Punchline, which is funny because we were going to actually go to Philadelphia Stilling, but they had an event that night and we kind of rolled up there. We was, this was impromptu. Um, but shouts at Philadelphia Stilling nonetheless. We love them. But we was like, we need to get, we need to just breathe, go somewhere. So we had a cute little section at Punchline. We, we was outside. We didn't go to a comedy show, but there was a drink they had there that was popping. It was some ginger lemonade or whatever, and they served it in a shaker. And the cool thing about it is that the, the drink is $22. Now let me be very clear. It's a big serving in a shaker cup. It's $22 because it comes with the cup. But after that, refills are super, super low. I can't remember how much the refills were, but they were definitely not the same price as the original cost with the shaker. And you could take it home and you can come back with it. And listen, I'm going to be testing this because let me tell you something. Mr. Josh and I have been going to Kimmel shows for a minute. We love our theater. Now Jamarcus and I went to go see Moulin Rouge last month. Well, you know what we're going to go see this week? Of course, The Lion King. I've never been, I've nev-, I mean, let me be clear. I've never seen Lion King on Broadway. I've seen the movie, the live action. I love The Lion King, but I never forever, for every reason, I never had, like when I went to New York, we always, I was always like, I don't want to be the basic girl. I go to see The Lion King. Because everyone sees The Lion King. Now I should have saw the Phantom and I'm so heartbroken. The Phantom Opera is no longer on Broadway. After over 30 something odd years of being on Broadway, Phantom Opera has, has closed, it shutters. It shuttered. It's had its final show and that was in February. Wow. It was a long, one of the longest running Broadway musicals of all time. Now The Lion King is in the ranking. It's been on, on Broadway for over 20 years now, I believe. 25 years, actually. The movie is going to be 30 years old next year. Time is passing, but it is a lot, right? So I, I never wanted to see it on Broadway in New York because I was like, I wish to see newer shows, see different things. I don't want to be that person. But now that it's come to Philly and it's at the Kimmel, I can now finally indulge in this and see what everyone's been talking about. So I'm excited to see it. I'm really excited to see it. I, I've heard rave reviews. Everyone's loving it. Um, and it sounds great. Uh, my good friend Laura took her daughter and they watched it. And the daughter saw Nala who's on the stage and apparently she was adorable. And I saw a picture. She's so adorable. Nala is so adorable. So we don't, I want to see the show. I want to see it. I want to get all into the hype, you know, um, you know, circle of life, baby. So why I say this is that Kimmel has, anyone who's going to Kimmel, you can get cups. They have like a 16, I think a 12 ounce, six, like six ounce cup, a smaller cup. And the smaller one is for wine and you pay, you pay a little money for, you pay like a, a, a higher price upfront with the container. But then after that, you can get as many refills as you want. Now, we finally was able to get the, I got the cocktail glass version of the cup, which is like 16 ounces. And then there is a smaller one, which I think is more for wine. So we got these cups at the house. The plan is we're going to go to Lion King with them because you know, I have my little cute little clear Telfi that I've been rocking. Everyone loves the clear Telfi. I love it too. Um, I have a little nice bag. I could fit them in there. They're cute. And so I'm going to try it at the Kimmel. I'm going to go and see, okay, we back. We're not buying new cups. We have these cups. We've had them. When I refill straight up, I'm, I'm not paying no introductory costs. Did that, done that. Now I'm back. I just want straight, straight discount drinks and refills immediately. So I'm going to go, I'm going to try it out. We're going to go see The Lion King this week, uh, and want to see what it's giving. And what's also cool is that every show that I've went to at Kimmel has, um, what are those things called? They're specialty cocktails that's connected to the show. And so that's part of the fun of it all. So at Moulin Rouge, they had some drink, child, that was the bomb. We went and got a drink to watch. And then when there was intermission, we came right back. It was like another, um, that was really, really good. There's a Lion King drink, I believe. I don't know what's in it. I don't know the details yet, but I'm looking forward to trying that one too and seeing what it gives. So that's that. But Influencer Awards was really dope. I don't know if it's coming back. Uh, I don't know. My opinion is if, you know, the influencer scene in Philly is huge, but I don't necessarily know if there's enough to justify awarding another batch. I don't know if they're deserving enough. I feel like these are one of those events where it's like, it'd be one great big event. You have it, you have a good time and it just celebrates the, the industry at hand. And then after that, kind of can just discontinue because I mean, the money is there, if the money and the ads and sponsors are there, it could, it could work. But I just wonder if there's enough influencers to honor in that way every year. Um, because it's kind of like, you know, there might be some new ones, but then there's someone that's been around. It's like, how do you just, do you want to keep the, the program going where you award the same people every year? Or do you nominate the same people to make, make it exciting and new? And it's just, it's very hard to figure out with those types of things. So I'm, I'm curious to see if it comes back next year or if it's just, was this a great event? Just to throw for one big, you know, celebration, you know, like there was a soray and then there was of course, you know, the event itself. I've wondered if that's it. We'll see. Only time will tell, but, but that was something that was on my mind. So eater has been having a week. Hmm. I'm drinking, oh my God. So I'm drinking Vita Coco coconut water. You know, that's my favorite. Um, I've been on a coconut water binge for like the whole summer, it just seems like. And this is the best of the best when it comes to coconut water consistently across the aisle. Vita, uh, Coco, just, just do it. I mean, it has the nut, has the nutrients, the electrolytes. It just, it's organic certified, USDA certified organic, which is important. And it just gets the body right in a natural way. It just gets me feeling relaxed, especially from a long weekend. And I am like not drinking for at least 72 hours. That's what I told myself. Um, I just want to just hydrate and recover. I'm not hungover of course, but I'm just like, I need to hydrate. So speaking of hydration eater, um, this week in eater was great. I mean, you all saw, I did a hoagie crawl in West Philly. You all loved that story so much. Your traffic was great. And I went to my like hotspots in West Philly. I, I'm, I'm trying to sell the idea to people that, you know, go to South and North Philly for cheesesteaks. Come to West Philly for hoagies. I think that we have a nice hoagie scene in West Philly and I shouted out, meaning my favorite places. And people were just really debating about it. So folks were like, well, why wasn't Whole, not Whole Foods? Why wasn't, um, oh my goodness, what is it? Fresh Grocer not on there? Child, Fresh Grocer, come on y'all. Anywho, I did put one corner store on there called Quick Deli. Um, that was a place I put on there that I just was like, this deserves recognition. I know that there's some controversy, but I thought Quick Stop Deli was great. Of course I put Honey Suckle Provisions, which I gotta get my behind there next Friday. Is there any time I can, I can't even go next Friday. Maybe, maybe there's time on my schedule. I need to go next Friday and get one of these delicious, um, fish hoagies. Y'all, the fish hoagies at Honey Suckle Provisions are no joke. They do this like, uh, fried fish hoagie situation every Friday. Um, they've been doing it. If you have not been, go. Uh, Lee's Deli in Baltimore Avenue. I did Lee's Deli. I did Fuwa Mini Market, which is great because they have the best baamims I've ever had. Um, some of the best, some of the best I've ever had. Um, Saad's Halal Restaurant. Let me tell y'all something about Saad's. Don't mess with Saad's. I'm not talking about country cooking Saad because that is horrible. I'm talking about Saad's Halal Restaurant on 4500 Walnut Street. Okay. They got a great cheesesteak there that is, it deserves its own props. But they have this grilled chicken hoagie. Okay. It's called a chicken swish swoop. Um, let me say it again. Chicken swish swoop. W T A W O O K. Um, that last part, listen, there, you can deliver from them. You can get delivery. They have everything, but that chicken swish shawuk is the bomb with the, with onion rings. They have some great onion rings. If you, this, it's hard to find people into onion rings. I'm into onion rings. I prefer onion rings over fries. If I ever have the choice between onion rings and fries, I'm always going to go with onion rings. This is who I am. But they're dope. I have Coke's Deli or Koch's Deli on 4309, 09, uh, Locas. It's an institution. They've been around, it's a Jewish style deli and they've been around since 1966. Of course I had to have them on there. And then, you know, I know University City in West Philly, the, the, you know, tomato some, well, it's not tomato tomorrow. There is an adjacency, right? I put High Street Hoagies on 34th and Walnut. That's at the, um, Franklin's Table. Listen, if you can go, um, if, if, it's Ellen Yen's concept around hoagies. They're so good. She has, every hoagie she has is named after an area in, um, Philly. So she has the Powson Village, which is a vegetarian, um, grilled vegetables, mozzarella. It's a vegetarian hoagie. But they also have like the Brewery Town Hoagie, which is like poached chicken, Frank's Hot Sauce. But they also have like the Brewery Town Hoagie, which is like poached chicken, Frank's Hot Sauce, celery. Iceberg lettuce and, you know, it's it's really good. They have a bunch of great sandwiches there. And so if you're in a hoagie, you know, situation, you can't go deep into West Philly and get one or whatever the case. High Street Hoagies is pretty good and it's West Philly adjacent, so I did with them on the list. Um, but yeah, these are some great places to go to for the hoagie crawl. Um, and I put that for West Philly. There's been a great list. We had, you know, a list of the happy hours, the fifteen essential happy hours in Philly. Which to tell you, as food editor, I'll tell you that I, one of the things I love about my job and the work that I do, my career, to be honest. Is having the ability to get the record straight. Now, this fifteen list of essential happy hours in Philly is great, it's a great place to go to. But there was one missing that I did on this, I felt like deserved to be there, and that's Lose and Choose. Lose and Choose, baby, if you don't know about Lose and Choose, baby, Lose and Choose is a black institution. And it is one of the best of the best. Lose and Choose Lounge, okay, oh, twenty one zero one West Hunting Park Avenue. You gotta go there. Oh my god, it's a scene, it's a scene, it's black, it's west, it's north, it's north energy, north Philly. At its finest, it's a vibe. And I was like, how come this is not on the list? This has to get updated. So I did do that. Uh, and there's some other great places on there. All this can be found at philly.eater.com, um, if you wanna check us out. And then lastly, I do wanna make this point, uh, we have a food trucks list. Gio did a great list for us, um, on the most fantastic Philly food trucks. He's now a contributor for us. And it's been great. And also, I wanna add that I did a list about where to eat in Germantown, Mount Airy and Chestnut Hill. People were fighting each other on that list in the comments. Be respectful in the comments, y'all, keep it cute, we're adults. Let me explain this. One of the things that irks me when I do lists on neighborhoods or areas, even, actually take that back, all these lists. People always do the, what about this? What about this? And I, and I really wanna say, I, what I really wanna say and. And what about it? But I can't because I can't. But it's like, they debate, they're like, oh, you missed the place. I didn't miss the place. I just did not. I just didn't choose the place. I didn't miss the place, I just dissed the place. I don't know. I I'm, you know, the 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 li- these lists are not comprehensive lists, y'all. These lists are chosen, selected lists. These are lists that I think are good. Listen, taste is subjective. But people always, I think, get real caught up in like, oh my goodness, this has to be, you gotta pick this restaurant and you fit. Listen, it's subjective. And people are like, well, why are you? Because let me tell you why. Because do we have to go on the extensive? Number of restaurants I've been to in this city, it is a region. How many years I've gone to restaurants, how many restaurants I've tried and compared, how many restaurants I've been in your hood and your neighborhood. Now I'm going to people's cities and going to restaurants that people in their own cities haven't been to. It's because that experience, that extensiveness allows me to feel confident in my decision. Now, you may not, you may not think this place is good or this place isn't whatever, okay, that's your prerogative. But people wanna know what I like to eat, people like to go to experts. And sometimes, you know, your range might be limited. So one of the things I do with my list is, I don't pick the same places. So I try not to have super identical restaurants. I try to find what is great about one restaurant. So, for example, I'm like, you know, we need to have a place that's halal. We need to have a vegan place. We need to have a place that's a brewery, right? We gotta have a place that's not a brewery. This place is this by the own, by the same owner. I don't wanna put like five restaurants by the same person that owns it. Let me pick this restaurant out. Ooh, this is a restaurant that's kid friendly. Ooh, this is a cute cafe. Like, I try to pick different things on the list. That can fit for different types of tastes and interests and styles at the best of my abilities. Um, but that's just it. And then also I have to be selective, right? There's a ton of restaurants in Germantown Brewery, all of that stuff. There's a ton of restaurants in Germantown and in Mount Airy and Chestnut Hill. But this was the list I want to say represents a wide variety of things to go eat. So that's what I did. That's how my list process works. So if you see, you're not gonna give me five Italian restaurants, it's not going on the list. Love you, but it can't happen. Um, but the the big story this week, I did my first ever editorial for, uh, the publication. Um, it's been over a month since I've been at Eater. Yay, so much celebration. Um, my 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 first full month was last week. Um, and it's been great. I'm in my groove. I feel like I'm about like ninety percent there. Um, I'm pretty much know most of the systems. I can do mostly everything by myself now. I know how to sign things, book people, all that kinda stuff, get stuff up. I'm in my groove, I'm in a groove and I'm really on board now. I feel fully on boarded a month in. But I wrote my first editorial, which I wanted to wait. I didn't wanna come in so hot so early. I kinda did come in hot by default cuz I'm just, that's just who I am. But it's like, I was like, I don't wanna give, I just wanna just put out lists. And the list we're doing a lot of, was doing a lot, but I was like, I wanna do this editorial. So I wrote a piece. About, you know, the excess of spectacle of Philly dining. And talked about a little bit about dinner in block, which y'all know I can't stand. And then also Bankroll, which was this place that has so much promise. And, you know, one of the biggest news things for me that came out of Bankroll is that. You know, for many people didn't know, it was Bankroll gonna make it, it wasn't not gonna make it. And everyone was, you know, debating or not what they, what was gonna happen. And it was a lot going on where I was like, um, you know, what was happening, but let me see. I wanna share this. So I got an email from a source this weekend. It said, Bankroll update. Dear former Bankroll employees affected today, your status has been turned from furloughed to terminated. Bankroll has made the decision not to reopen doors in the fall. And apparently it came from Human Resources. And that's what was sent to people. So Bankroll is done. And we knew this was coming because there was so many hints throughout the week. Um, Bankroll was auctioning items. People were furloughed, whether the impression that. There might be hope that they were gonna re-censor, but after I think the public, you know, press about them, it's not coming back. And to be honest, I don't think it should. I think. One, one of the things that has to stop, and this is as somebody who's been traveling a little bit now. Philly has this thing where it wants to be what everyone else is doing around them. But don't, are not honest about their clientele and honest about the, where the ci- the city is at the moment. No one asked, and what we found out is that in that neighborhood in Rittenhouse. The people there wanted a movie theater there. Um, that's what I've heard from people who was dealing with zoning and talking about locations. People did not want Bankroll. They wanted a movie theater, y'all, in that place. But money, power, influence will try to force a concept when people don't want it. When Steven Star pulled out and backed out, that's who was the red flag that he knew what was gonna happen. Um, I mean, they're out here with billionaire bacon, they think they're too good for nachos. They're serving baked Alaska, y'all. And I'm like, who is coming to watch an Eagles game eating baked Alaska? It was too upscale for its own good. There were people who clamored to Bankroll and I'm not gonna throw shade. But they're just always people that will run to a concept or something that looks like it's upscale to be something or not a pretender or something dope. The thing about style, tradition, you know, taste, is that taste is never driven by money. I mean, in some cases, money does matter in taste, but it's not driven by money alone. Like, just because something costs a lot of money doesn't make it dope, doesn't mean it looks good, doesn't mean it's stylish, doesn't mean it's a what's up. And I think there's so many people that are just on this bandwagon in their heads that, oh, if I get this from this place, if I get this or do this. That this means this. It's like, no, sometimes this is this and that is that. And there are some people I feel like who just cannot make that distinction. So as a result, a lot of times stuff happens where we're wondering, okay, why is this trend? Why, why, why did this flop? And there's some people that are like not trend setters, they just ride the wave. And so as a trend setter, I I typically can see something that's coming, that's miles away. So I'm like, this is gonna be a hit. I have a funny sense, I have a sense in me that lock bar, for example, Baltimore. When it comes to Philly, I feel like it's about to be that spot because Philadelphians love seafood. Y'all don't know what to do with the seafood y'all have here, we're tired of whiting. Okay, I talked about that in the other episode, but anyhow. You just know. And I just feel like with Bankroll, I just was like, I never went to Bankroll, y'all, fun fact. I never went. Um, because there was something about it, just is like, it just turned me off. I just was like, I don't think this is, this is, this looks corny to me. And there's a lot of concepts that I've seen come and go over the years. And so I talk about that in a piece, like Mad Rex. Y'all remember that post-apocalyptic place or whatever? That never lasted too long. I was just like, this is not Philly. Um, this would be cute maybe in Houston, but I just don't see it working in Philly. Like, there's just some concepts that just don't work. Um, I keep telling them, they need to bring that rosé pop-up spot that that was in New York. They should bring that in Philly. I don't know if y'all know about this, but like a couple of years ago, a group of my friends, we went to the rosé pop-up garden. It was like a, like basically it was like a place for rosé lovers. And it was like rosé sending stuff, the history of rosé and. All of these different things. It was like really, really fun. It's like a little tour and get drinks. And then you get, at the end, you could buy all these bottles of all this like great rosé that you tried. It was such a smart idea and concept. And it was in New York and I really feel like if that were to came to Philly. Philly would eat it up because it's a, there's a crowd for that stuff. And it's cute, it's romantic, it's girly, it's fun, it's gay, it's 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 everything it needs to be. And I feel like, like a concept of that can work in Philly. But what's not working in Philly is this ridiculous, over the top sports bar that's trying to serve gourmet restaurant food on Chestnut Street. With ridiculous cuisine, but also these big huge TVs. And this looks like there's two concepts clashing and I just don't. And it's over, it's expensive because it's expensive. Like, it just wants to say, we're rich bitch. Okay, like, you, you, you know, and it doesn't have any rhyme or reason. Then there's plans for there to be gaming and gambling and all kinda stuff connected. Just never panned out well, which I knew it wasn't, but you know, here we are. Um, I also think about other concepts, like, so, you know, there's that Liberty Point. Venture, you know, marketed as the largest rest- outdoor restaurant in Philadelphia or some crap. And it just has not really peaked. And people thought it was controversial that I said that influencers hyped it more than the public. I feel like that's true. No one's really going to Liberty Point like that in a way that they think it's great. I've heard horror story after horror story about the customer service there at Liberty Point. Um, I went for a grand opening that was already chaotic, um, last summer. And it just seems like it's a lot going on. It just seems like this is a money grab, which respectfully. Make your money, develop, do your thing. But like at the same time. You can't expect for something like that. It just gives Titanic. It just gives, we put a lot of money in this big idea. And it just has never set sell the way it was supposed to. I mean, at the end of the day, people go, people eat, people like it, whatever like that, but it's not, well. It's not the kinda thing where you're gonna ever see, at least me, recommend at mass. Like, oh, you have to go here. This is the must-go place. It's like, it's there, it's gonna make its money cuz it's waterfront, but it's not the best thing ever since ice bread. So there's lessons to be learned, honestly, from all these different concepts that come by. Some win, some lose. It's the business. So before I get into hot topics, um. I went to Tosca in Germantown, brand new restaurant over there. Fire grilled pizza concept, which was dope. They have beer. I'm not a beer drinker, but they really have a nice indoor brewery situation. The cocktails, however, were phenomenal. Um, really, really liked their cocktails. I like a cocktail that is fruity and flirty and fun, but also got a nice strong kick to it that lets me know there's liquor in it. Cuz sometimes I'm like, am I just drinking flavored water or like some cute little juice where the juice is really good, but it's like. Is there liquor in this or you just made a really good juice? So they have really good cocktails where it's obviously they're, they got a booze-ness to them, but they're also fun and there's something for everybody. So I really did like Tosca and they were so nice. They made me sign their wall. They have like a wall that's like a bunch of beer, like these little, um, like cutting boards or whatever. And they turn them into like these designs. But they gave me a permanent black marker and they made me autograph it. And the only person outside of, that has autographed outside of me is Michael Klein, who's the food reporter at, um. The Philadelphia Inquirer. So that was kinda dope. Um, a shout out to them for the hospitality. But it was a great time. The pizza was really good. I really liked their wings. Yes, the wings stood out to me. And had these Poulton, um, poutine, um, fries in situation, that was good too. That's the bar spot. Um, I feel like it's just a really good bar in the area. Definitely new, but got a nice little, little, um, like, there's a, um, not Armenian, it's. What is it? Is it? Um, hmm, it was, yeah, I think it was Armenian. Albanian, 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 no, Albanian, it's Albanian. No, it's Armenian, it's Armenian cuisine. And yes, cuz I remember he was telling me, Kim Kardashian is not Armenian, she's Albanian. And if she's not Albanian, then this must be Ar- Armenian restaurant. I, I, listen, it, that's why it's called Tosca. But it's a great spot, but they're, um. Their leanings, I'm trying to remember exactly what the vibe was cuz like, it was like the cuisine had a story within a story. So they're from, um, Kos- Kosovo, Kosovo. Um, and they wanted to bring this restaurant. It is Albanian, yes, Albanian. Yes, not Armenian, Albanian. I think Kim is Armenian and they're Albanian. So they have a lot of great stuff. So one of the things they have is they, they have a little mini chain called M two O Burgers and Salads. Um, and that was in twenty eighteen, they came up with that concept, which was five years ago. Um, they also had a place called Have a Burger, which is in Haver Town, Pennsylvania, that opened in twenty sixteen. They came to the US in two thousand, the brothers Leo, Pep and Jim, um, also many old geek, most of my gosh. Um, they're three brothers from War- Warturn, uh, Kosovo. Um, they arrived here. Um, like the American dream, right? And and this was in two thousand. And in twenty sixteen, they created, um, Have a Burger. So these are the people behind Have a Burger in Haver Town, Pennsylvania. And then they have M two O Burgers and Salads. Which I like, and I did not know this was from them, but those are, that food is good. Um, they have a lot of great mates are earn bur- um, made to order burgers. But that was five years ago. Now, they have come in along with Chef Rich Dobbys to do Tosca Restaurant Brewery. And that is, um, just opened recently this summer. So that's fun. They have a lot of distinct flavors. And there is some, some, the, the, the vibe of the space has Albanian heritage all in it. It's a very beautiful place. Very layered, very fun. There's seventy one thirty six Germantown Avenue, just in case people want to know. So into these hot topics. Okay. You know, there's a song by Plies called Third Time, which I really love. Um, it's just a vibe. I I really like Plies, the rapper. Uh, what, you know, people like, what happened to Plies? Plies is still out here on the internet trolling people. I remember when he had this big, huge career, like what, fifteen years ago? And he was like the hottest rapper, like, whoa, he was one of the hottest rappers. He had a lot of songs on radio, collaboration with T-Pain. He was on a lot of, a lot of stuff. People really like Plies. He was, he was quite the, the sound. Um, but there is now, you know, he has a song called Third Time. Bots are running up in it for the third time, third time. Love that song. It's a nice little bop. And it's also connected to Britney Spears. I mean, I don't know if y'all have a server here at this whole Britney Spears and Plies thing. We'll talk more about that later. But anyhow, for the fourth time, Trump has now been indicted again. Fulton County DA Fannie Willis, a black woman, is now putting him up on Rico charges. And let me tell you about DA Fannie Willis, okay? This is the same woman who put Rico charges on Young Thug. Y'all remember the whole Gunna drama, all that, a couple, a couple of months ago, we were talking about this with these rappers copping his Rico charge? I think we talked about a Rico charge, like what is Rico charge? Cuz everyone loves the word Rico, Rico, Rico. Uh, but like basically organized crime, like basically crime mastermind scheme. This is, this is, this is the highest, this is intellectual, okay, baby, this is a mastermind. Many people are involved. This is a criminal mastermind scheme. But let me tell you, this Fulton County, this is Fulton County, Georgia DA, Fannie Willis, baby, she don't play, she don't play. She got Rudolph Giuliani up in that indictment, so multiple kind of, many people outside of Trump is copping this indictment. But they didn't got Rudy Giuliani, baby, woo. Election tampering, manipulation and fraud, all of this stuff. Connected, rocketeering, all the serious white collar crime. This is no joke. Now, people think Rico charges are connected to drugs, but it's not. It's organized crime. So people think like mobsters and people that's connected to the mob. They used to get, um, Rico charges cuz that was organized crime. Like, this is scale level, this ain't no one person hit somebody. This is you, you organize different people to do various things to break the law. This is serious. This is probably the most serious in, uh, indictment charge or whatever, not charge, but indictment situation that, that. That Trump has got himself into. This is serious. And there is some serious consequences. Now, we don't know how soon. Speculation is, Fannie wants to have his first trial begin the day before the GOP presidential primary. In the spring of twenty twenty four. Oh, she's not playing. She wants it early. Uh, she wants to do it as soon as possible. Because by the time the trial ends before the election, whether Trump gets. Because by the time the trial ends before the election, whether Trump gets the, you know, endorsement or not. If he gets goes down, he will not be the next president of the United States. Look, it's a strong possibility, baby, because he is a front runner. And it is what it's given, right? We'll see. But we should protect DA Fannie Mills, okay, district attorney at all costs. She's a national treasure. I always thought a black woman was gonna get it done. You know, I was. You know, think about all the women who have already got Trump in, in some shit that was coming for him. You know, we can't forget about our New York. You know, our New York DA who um, you know, she has been, you know, doing it over there. The New York AG Letitia James, one of my favorite people um that haven't met. Um, she's just dope. She, you know, she's, she's been on Trump from day one and she's been coming heavy. Then you know, we can't ignore brother Alvin Bragg in Manhattan, Manhattan DA Alvin Bragg. He's been coming through too. But you know, black women, black people in law, from Alvin Bragg to Letitia James to Fannie Willis. They are coming strong on this, on him. So I'm here for it. Speaking of which, now the guy who everyone thinks has the, the closest chance to getting, you know, Trump. You know, the, the, the defeating Trump is Ron DeSantis. Everybody thinks those are the two people, right? It's either gonna be Ron DeSantis or Donald Trump. I'm not convinced on either of these people, be, be honest. But let's get into DeSantis. The streets are saying DeSantis' war on woke, on woke, on woke is tanking with GOP supporters. GOP supporters are not really feeling Ron DeSantis. And I've been saying this for weeks and for months. But they're not feeling him. And like all of this, they're saying they're confused. And see, this is why my book. The Case for Counsel Culture Matters. Because the Case for Counsel Culture, I spell out. The contradictions of the GOP when it comes to all this stuff. And I think there's, there are people that are starting to realize. What the fuck is he talking about? They're confused about what he's, his attacks on woke, like they don't know. What he means, what, what, what is he trying to do? What is he trying to ban? What is he trying to keep? He talks about censorship, he censoring books. Like there's a lot of extremism and I'm telling you. That there are people who are in favor of abortion in the GOP. Cause let's be real, reproductive rights impact women of all political persuasions. They're not here for Ron DeSantis' narrative on, on all these issues. He keeps. You know, just, just, and I think the thing is, he wants to appeal to Trump's base. But what he doesn't understand is that. The extremism in policy is not what makes people appeal to Trump. People appeal with Trump because Trump just simply says what he wants to say. And he's gonna make sure that he gonna cut taxes for the rich. And you know, he's got reta racist rhetoric that appeals to those blue collar people. But they just wanna see a rich man with swagger make them feel like they matter. Ron DeSantis is a Harvard grad. Which again, another Ivy grad, Trump is too, I know. But Ron DeSantis wears his Ivy Leaginess on him. He won't really go after Trump for real, for real. But at the same time, he wants to convince people he's his better option. Where, how? You was at one point kissing and licking on his kneecaps at one point. Now you're going against them? The crazy part is all the Republicans that are talking all this to try to run against Trump. All of y'all was over there. Kissing his ass. And also, I really don't care about, I mean, first of all, like all of them are trying to be mini Trumps. Voters in the GOP are probably like, well, why, why, I just won't stick with the original. The thing that is happening though, and what I'm witnessing is I feel like. There are sources that are invested in trying to get Trump to appear as un-electable as possible. Until Trump is in jail behind bars with a mugshot before, until he is in a situation. Where he cannot campaign, cause he is in behind bars with his bail and he's caught with the legal woes for real, for real. They're not, they, they, like, they li- literally the feds are gonna have to take Trump out and take him out. Like they're gonna have to like take him out. And I'm not talking about physically, I'm talking about politically. He will have to be in jail. Before anyone takes this situation seriously. As long as he's able to do rallies and, and, and accuse. The Democratic Party and create mass hysteria, confusion, he's a free man. And so then they're not gonna see it. Because they don't believe it's real. They don't believe all these charges and indictments are real. And I gotta keep it one hundred. I remember all the hype around Hillary and her emails. And how people thought for five seconds, oh, this is the end for Hillary. And Hillary never got indicted. Hillary never got arrested, never had a mugshot, never had charges. None of that shit ever happened. And so it makes you, I think some people are wondering to themselves. Okay, he hasn't indicted, but he has an indictment. And while he wants to keep going back in the past. And retroactively debating and legitimizing and all this with his case, let it go. Because all the things you said about Hillary is not gonna bite you in the ass. You kept saying, Trump, I'm referring to, that. You can't support Hillary. You don't know, she may or may not go to jail. There's a pending probe over her and that worked, okay? That motherfucking James Comer, fuck him, okay? This man literally kept that situation going. And it made people voters, some voters, not me. But some people was like, hmm, she might actually go to jail. But the misinformation, different, disinformation. Has been going on for a long time and the, and at this point, everything that's happening, I fear. And this is my theory that I didn't want to talk about last week, because I wanted to see if the fourth indictment was coming. It has, that some people are gonna look at Trump as a martyr. Some of them are feeling like that the Democrats, because it's their conspiracy theory, is throwing all these charges on him. To try to break him. And for whatever reason, they believe that they are vested in seeing this man succeed. So they have a strong interest in seeing this man continue to make it. So they're invested in this man's success. And I don't think people get that. Like they want to see him win, so. That is that, okay? In Philly, there is a group called West's Best. The West's Best Party is going against Jamie Gattie. You know, um, there's a guy, I, I sometimes slip up and call him Gumby, but it's a mistake. Jabari Jones, um, who is over the West Philadelphia Corridor, Business Corridor Association. He's the president of that group. He is relentless and going after Jamie Gattie. I mean, Jeffrey Yaz, if you wanna make it rain, make it rain on some of these parks and playgrounds and, and help clean up the neighborhood. If you wanna make money, rain over here, Jeffrey. Jeffrey Yaz is a billionaire. He is the richest person in Pennsylvania. He puts his money in politics and for whatever reason. He does not wanna see Gattie win, which I get, you know, in the world of bad versus evil, good guys, bad guys. Everybody has their vice and their, and their villain. And so for this group, the villain is Gattie. They, you know, she's a developer's worst nightmare. Um, that's what they think. I mean, my opinion. I don't think Jamie Gattie is a nightmare. I, I think. To be honest, I don't think, I don't think she is as bad as people describe. And I do have my disagreements with her. I just feel like at this point, Gattie has to figure out who she wants to be politically. She needs to pick a side and she needs to stay there. I think. She does this, this back and forth and, and it's not working, girl. It's not working. It's not working. It's not working. Um. I think some of the better politicians are politicians that kind of just, just, just know what they are, who they are and figure out how to support themselves and keep going that route. Um, don't run for mayor, because then you end up like Helen Kim. But I think where we are in politics is that. The mixy, messy, I'm in bed with this person, I'm in bed with this person, I have this relationship. Some of that, I mean, it's, it's inevitable. But some of it is like, you just have to figure out who you are, because the reality is, is that. I feel like based on her moves, I haven't spoken to her about any of this full disclosure. I have not. But I'm saying on my end with Gattie, I feel like figure out, number one, who is your real supporters? Figure out who are your real enemies and move accordingly. And if you, and the issue though is. Because she'd have got herself up in this working family party shit. She is. Trying to, you know, appeal to their base, but I believe her base is bigger, okay? So let me say something that's interesting. I'm gonna pour this tea. I think I might have mentioned this before, but it's just a fact. So, you know, a lot of the liberals, the progressives, the progressives of Philly. You know, they don't like Ryan Boyer, who's over the building trade. Now, I love Ryan Boyer. I don't give a fuck what these progressives over there think. Because to be honest, sidebar, before I get into that, the progressive community in Philadelphia has been hijacked by a lot of white gentrifiers. And a lot of folks who are not from here, that have not been here long enough to understand how Philly politics works, and yet they wanna take the city over. I'm sorry. How do you do that and you haven't learned the groundwork or the grain? They, 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 they had a, a plan. That a master plan, the final solution, um, which they thought was going to just clean up moderates and really take over and make the city progressive. And it failed. It failed because they didn't listen to black people. It failed because they didn't even listen to the black progressives in, in the neighborhoods. They, they just did what they wanted to do. Like they've done in every other city across America, trying to, you know, just come in and apply the same one trick pony that has not worked. They're trying to do AOC types of grassroots organizing here and it does, does not work where, where, where. You know, AOC is at in New York is not the same demographic and energy of Philadelphia. But these people watch these Netflix documentaries, they get inspired to do what they wanna do. But let me back, get back to it. So Ryan is over the building trades. Ryan is big labor, okay? They don't like Ryan, the progressives, a lot of them don't, because of the fact that he is. You know, supportive of moderate candidates like, you know, Conor Lamb, like. You know, uh, Sherrell Parker, right? They support these types of people. However, working family party candidates, some of them. They, some of these areas that they're in, these black neighborhoods, they need to get the kind of support. That Ryan Boyer is doing. So, you know, Tariq Khan, who was the brother of Joe Khan, who's a progressive. They, they support Tariq Khan, right? They, they support, you know, the, you know. One fun fact that no one's talked about, but Ryan Boyer has thrown a fundraiser for Jamie Gattie. And so, it's funny how she walks around alongside all these people that's trashing people. Like Ryan, but don't recognize that while y'all are trashing him, some of your faves like Gattie. Would not be having the type of money she had without people like him. Sam could be Sam for Kendra, Sam could be Sam for Nicholas. And it's interesting because they all kind of click up and they, and they, and they kind of. Take these pictures with Helen and they try to resurrect Helen. I mean, you know, or try to go out here. But it's getting harder for them, because some of them have did some back citing that is now hurting the crew. And so working fantasy party is in this weird situation, because the, the candidates they have right now, the leading candidates right now. Are black. But they're struggling to get some of the black Democratic Party support. They wanna go to these parties. They wanna go to this stuff, but at the same time, it's like, you all support candidates. That go against the party, the Democratic Party's endorsements. So who are you in this situation? Like, where do you stand? And voters and public and world leaders and community, and community members just have a weird, mixy relationship with them. Because of just how mixy they are. Cause no one really knows where they really stand. And so it's really hard. And when you're dealing with a political party, Democratic Party, which is big on loyalty, big on that kind of stuff. You, you really can't keep Robin Peter to pay Paul for relevance. So there is some interesting trouble. Now, I don't predict Gattie's gonna lose. I think Ja- Jabari is gonna lose. It's just, it's gonna happen. He's not winning. And he shouldn't win, to be honest. I don't really know. I just feel like being a reactionary candidate don't make you the best candidate. Gattie definitely needs to improve, but I don't think whatever she's done thus far requires her to lose the seat. That's just my stance. Leave her alone. But. Community though, and residents, I definitely think we as a collective, because she is my city councilperson. We as a collective should definitely call her more to the carpet. And I think people have. But I don't think it's warrants her to completely not get her seat. I don't think she should lose. And that's just my take. Mike Driscoll is running for city council president? What? Yes, I saw this headline. People was asking me what do I think. First of all, I don't know what to think. He lives in the Northeast. He replaced Bobby Heenan. He's a new person, pretty much. Why? Don't get it, don't understand it. Does he want more media attention or publicity? We all know he's not winning. Why is he making this more complicated? Who on council will support him? I don't see it. Hmm, not a fan. Um, keeping it one hundred. I ain't gonna hold you. I, I'm not a fan. I don't see it. Now, here's something that's been interesting. Um. Cause I do wanna talk about this. And, and I, and I, and I need to figure out how I wanna say this. Cause a lot of you all have been asking me questions. And I do wanna answer this question, because it is hot. Okay. So, a lot of you have been asking me, have I seen the relationship between Estli Merritt, who is a civil rights attorney. With Sean King, which we know they're homies, the controversial activist Sean King. And this situation with a GoFundMe account and Reggie Ray, who was the black man from um. Montgomery, Alabama, who was swinging with that white foldable chair. Okay. I have seen that GoFundMe. What I would tell you is that Estli Merritt is the one. That has been raising the money, over two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars raised. Um, he is currently representing Reggie Ray. Sean King has been promoting the GoFundMe, the screenshots of it on his Instagram page. And as you all know, Sean King consistently trashes me at every chance he gets. Because at the end of the day, I'm the person that has been able to find, prove, I, I see him for what he is. I'll say that much. And what's interesting, cause I wanna update you on this, is that Sean King lost that lawsuit. So Carlos Vega, the DA Carlos Vega, who went against Sean King in court for defamation. Sued him, and I don't know if it was also Krasner, but sued that campaign, specifically Sean King for um. Basically defaming his character, accusing him of things he didn't do, sending misinformation, all that. Well, the court reined in and apparently. Carlos Vega, Vegas won his case and won seventy-five thousand dollars. And he, you know, Sean King had to publicly acknowledge that he was not very truthful. About how he described Carlos Vegas to the public. And Carlos Vegas sued, because Carlos Vegas is a lawyer. And lawyers know the law. And even if you don't like his politics, and I, I mean Carlos Vegas' politics are not my politics, I'm a group of justice. What we don't do is be out here talking egregious and salacious and not being able to back up our shit. When we know that there's public information and facts. And Carlos Vega, although. I didn't think he was the best candidate, clearly, if I had to pick my, my evils between Krasner and him, Krasner. I, that's why I voted for. But the, but, but the mere fact that. We saw misinformation being spewed purposely. Because that's what the court found, right? They found that what Sean King did and what they did in that, in that election period. Was deliberate, which is why he was able to sue. Defamation lawsuits are hard, y'all. It's not easy. To sue somebody on the basis of defamation. Let me just be one hundred with that. It is not easy to do that. So the fact that he was able to do it and to recuperate seventy-five thousand thousand damages tells you everything you need to know. See, people keep asking me. Oh, why, 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 why you don't like Sean King? At this point, there are tons of articles about Sean King. I myself has written several articles that have been published in mainstream publications. That literally outlines and spells out the consistent issues with Sean King's entire operation. His relationships and everything else. It's already public knowledge. It's already been written. And so I'm not doing this every single time something happens. Oh, I didn't know you didn't. If you like that piece of shit, go like him. But I don't. And I'm, and I'm gonna always look at you sid- if you're, if you're a Sean King supporter in twenty twenty-three, I'm gonna look at you sideways. You and I cannot be in the same world. Because if you know what I know, which what I know I've shared publicly. If you know all of those things, there's no way for you to be able to look me in the face and say to me that this is somebody that you see with me and that you can see. What I believe in, that, it just doesn't make sense. It don't make sense. I, 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 it doesn't make sense. I'm tired of the whole, well, you know, they're doing something for the community. What are they doing for the community? And do you really think it's good? Behind the root of what they do and what he does. There's always something with money involved. There's always something that's just weird involved. So let me talk about this situation that just recently happened and my thoughts on it. For starters, nobody is saying Sean King created this GoFundMe. I know he did not. But Estli Merritt, right, this attorney who's his homie, created it and fundraising off of it. You know, fundraising, talking about, he has two clients that has been impacted by the, the huge, you know. Um, Montgomery waterfront, riverfront brawl. So let me back up for people who don't know what happened. In a nutshell. Y'all know that big old fight that took place a couple of weekends ago in Montgomery, Alabama, at this riverfront brawl. Right now, as of the timing of this podcast, only five people have been, are, are currently charged. For misconduct, okay? Four, four of them are white. Reggie Ray, the the black man that went viral for hitting people with the white folding chair. He is the only black person who has been criminally charged. And let me explain to y'all what he's charged for. He has only one misdemeanor charge for disorderly conduct. That's it. That is it. Now, he has a September 1st court date. And there has been speculation and whispers that the charges could be increased or there could be more added to it. But as of right now, he's the only black person that has been charged. Okay, everybody else has not. Everybody else is like chilling. Estee Merritt has been given the impression, it's been implied in his rhetoric, that, you know, there more could happen. It could be more situations. And he's out here looking for victims and clients, he claims, he says, that have been impacted by this white mob attack. And he's look, he's he's looking into a civil rights, like a like a civil suit against the state of Alabama or the city of Montgomery. Either one, either the city of Montgomery or the state of Alabama. But he's looking for this 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 larger lawsuit based on people who had damages, you know, job loss and injuries. And he's got two people so far on record that have been able to get, he claims he has other clients, but they're not, they have not been named. Personally, in my own opinion, I don't believe him. What I believe is that I know for a fact that Reggie Ray and another person, another woman, that I know from my own inquiries, is being represented by him. But I don't believe that there is a groundswell of a bunch of clients. I don't understand exactly what he's suing for, because two things are happening and I'm confused. So Reggie Ray needs an attorney for his criminal charge. But let's just say in court, most of the at the time, a misdemeanor one count charge only is about five thousand dollars at most for a lawyer to do that job. The fact that there's like over two hundred or something thousand dollars raised off of GoFundMe connected to this situation, I'm just trying to figure out why. Why all this money? Why would anyone need that much money for a case? At, you know, it's getting close to three hundred thousand dollars in donations being raised. I'm just trying to figure out, why do you need all this money? Why do they need this money? Why is money being raised for them? Why are you doing this? Because because of the fact that he's raising the money, he gets to decide how this money gets split up and broken up and who gets what, who gets paid for what. But why? Why? This does not require that. All this money is not required for this situation. And I don't understand what is going on, legal fees. So it seems to me that, you know, and this is my opinion, that you got people out here that like helicopter and parachute their asses every time there's a black tragedy. You have these these disgusting lawyers, and I'm talking very openly because there's many shitty lawyers that are doing this. And y'all know who they are, and I don't have to name all their names. But you know, there are some shitty lawyers that are, every time a black person gets shot or something happens to somebody, they parachute their ass in the city. And they start looking to create a situation, create a case, create something. And a lot of the times, what we find out is that many of those cases don't get won. They don't win. You they never win these cases, but they raise all this money. And all this money pays for these legal fees that no one asks for. No one asks for these people to be their lawyer. But they just kind of drive in, they come in, they and they chase an ambulance. They're ambulance chasers. Black pimps hustling off of our trauma and our struggle, and this shit happens all the fucking time. And everyone frames it like, oh, they're the this, they're the out sharp, then they're this. No, they're not. They're not those people. They're not those people. They're they're literally are squirrels looking for a nut to bust. They're looking for an opportunity to cash in, to find some benefit and some relevance, and they just center themselves. And there's some stuff I know, y'all, I can't sell it right now. I can't speak on it right now. But the truth is going to come out. The truth is going to come out. And I just say that to a lot of people, what is sad is that there's a lot of black folks who are uneducated, that are going through a lot of struggles. And a lot of times, there's these really smart crafty people, crafty, grifty people that come in, and I'm speaking in general, that come in these neighborhoods and take advantage of the lack of information, education these people have. Have people signing documents they can't actually read, have people under the impression that they can't speak to the media because they're representing them, and really keeping these people in the dark about what's happening behind the scenes as they leverage these controversies yet again to get headlines and get praise, they get social media clout, and to make a fucking buck. And at some point, it's going to stop. And at some point, somebody's going to speak out and somebody's going to tell the truth. And it's not going to be enough time for a person to fly in and get a signature of an innocent person to get them to sign away their ability for them to really talk to the press and really tell what's really happening. Just speaking in general, just speaking in general. But as far as that situation goes with the Riverside situation, you know, Reggie Ray, you know, I I hope that that brother really keep in contact with his family. Because his family cares about him. His family knows that there are some people out here who are basically not good people. And I just hope that he listens to his family and don't get balked by the evils that be. And I'm speaking in general. All right, next topic. So the Shade Room. Y'all know the Shade Room been on shit for a minute. But there is this young guy, this young black guy uh who's been on social media dragging them because they're starting to get the, people are starting to see them for what they are. I've always knew the Shade Room was shady. But the Shade Room is in this drama right now. And it's playing out. The founder is being a liar. The founder, the owner of the Shade Room, she's being a liar about what she's putting out. But there was basically an Instagram story, an Instagram post they made, that was just basically saying that that Biden, I remember when this went viral, that Biden was giving every resident seven hundred dollars. That was impacted by the Maui, you know, fires over there in Hawaii. Now, a lot of people looked at that and was like, only seven hundred dollars. But what about the Ukraine? What about, you know, we giving all this money to Ukraine, but we ain't giving no money to 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 our own people? So they ran that. And the issue is, is that they only took like one or two pieces of tweets from Biden's thread that did not fully tell all the relief and all the things that they're going to do over there in Maui for the victims. They're not, the 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 Biden administration is doing a lot. There's more money coming. There's more investment coming. There's a lot of other things happening. But for whatever reason, the Shade Room only took one piece and ran that as the headline and got people just really talking bad about the Biden administration, a lot of confusion. And see, this is why I tell people the Shade Room has always been a problem. But they're a problem because now they're influencing voters, black voters, building apathy. When I look in those comments, those are black voters, y'all. And they're literally driving disinformation to get black voters to build up. And I'm like, why is it that with Trump, every time Trump gets his indictments, they announce it? But why is it that they always counter with Biden information as misguided, misleading? And somebody's feeling, somebody's really finally caught this out, this young person who went on TikTok and acknowledged on social media, acknowledged these problems. And then the Shade Room founder tried to say they were lying and all this other shit, but they were not lying. It's been found that these receipts are adding up, that you all are not doing your part to inform the public. And I keep telling people, stop following the Shade Room. They're addicted to the drama and the mess. But see, the issue with the Shade Room is they should have just focused on entertainment and celebrity gossip rather than trying to be the all-you-can-go-to news source, because they really have like millions and millions of followers, and misinformation like that creates problems. So for example, the disturb mess, they talked about, I think, Japan, who was giving two million dollars in aid to help Maui, and people went on social media and was like, oh, see, how they doing more than what Biden is doing? So the narrative and the rhetoric continues to reflect badly on the Biden administration. And it just seems to be weird. But see, this is the other thing I told the Biden administration now, Kamala, VP Kamala Harris, all of them, is that it's like, y'all brought them to the holiday party. Y'all legitimized the Shade Room in a way that you shouldn't. Y'all legitimized people like Jason Lee. Y'all bringing these types of bloggers trying to be cool. And now you've legitimized them. You've brought them out to your fucking White House for your party. And now they're putting out this misinformation about you all. And it's hard because now what are you going to do? Is is the spokesperson going to contact Shade Room, tell them, fact check? Is anybody going to actually correct the record? Because at this point, they're acting like a news company, and they are, even though they're a misinformation company. But look what they're doing. So I'm sad. I'm I'm just really happy more people calling this out. But I'm concerned about their role in these upcoming elections. Because with this type of information, this half-assness that they're doing, it is it's becoming a problem. So just want to put that out there. Lizzo's dancers, y'all, they're sticking beside her regardless. They don't care what y'all got to say about Lizzo. So some dancers around Lizzo two times for the Big Girls uh show have come up to speak positively about Lizzo following all this controversy. You know, Beyonce got a little heat for basically saying, you know, I love you, Lizzo, and showing her love to Lizzo publicly at her concert recently. You know, that's how it is in public. Sometimes it'd be one bad week, but then time begins to progress. And slowly but surely, people are having different conversations. I mean, I still am indifferent on the Lizzo situation. Like I've said before, where there's smoke, there's fire. Something may have went down, must have went down, in my opinion. I don't know how salacious or how problematic it is. But I am keeping my eyes on the tour. I'm I'm keeping my, not the tour, the trial, if there's a trial. But we'll see what happens. But I'm keeping my eye out. I'm 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 just observing. So Brittany, Brittany is breaking, and her husband broke up, Sam Asagagi, whatever the hell his name is, don't even care because he's a piece of shit, apparently. Sam is breaking up with Brittany. He's letting people know that they're going through what they're going through. He wants to act like they, he wants peace. He wants people to respect their privacy. Brittany seemed not to care. She's still around, dancing around the house, talking about she want a horse. There's a lot going on in Brittany world, child. It's always something. But one of the things that's interesting that came out was that Brittany did do a prenup. Apparently Brittany did a prenup, which is incredible. We're proud of you, Brittany. But apparently the rumor has been, the rumor in the press, there has been tabloids and blogs and people that suggest that Sam apparently is planning to put out embarrassing pictures of her and things if she does not renegotiate the prenup, because I guess he wants a cut. We don't know if that's true. He seems not to be acknowledging that. But let me just say this to Sam. Sam, we know that Brittany is on her journey to freedom, may have had some bumps along the way. Whatever videos you have, embarrassing videos, you think, child, her Instagram page alone is arguably embarrassing in some levels. We already know everything ain't up, everything ain't necessarily all the way together upstairs, and that is fine. Brittany is our, you know, Brittany's our cuz, okay? And we're just not going to let cousin Brittany go through anything, okay? We're not letting it happen. Y'all not about to sit up here and try it. We know Brittany is is going through what she's going through, and we don't need no videos and no pictures to prove it. We we get it. But you know what? You say all of that, but you was with her the whole time. You was you was videotaping, you was you was on your phone filming all those Instagram videos for her. And if he was her real man, he really loved it, you would not have her on Instagram doing all of that. I'm not saying censorship, conservatorship, but I'm just saying that if you felt like those videos are embarrassing or whatever the case were, why was you videotaping them? So you was not the whole time. Nothing you could do about Brittany is going to change the way none of us feel about her. We are Brittany Army. We love her and free Brittany forever and forevermore. Fuck you, Sam. I just wanted to say that. I don't know. Maybe Sam isn't doing it, who knows? But if he's thinking that he's going to embarrass her, he better guess again. This book coming out in October, I cannot wait for it to come. It's coming, y'all. Preorder it now. The Woman in Me, Britney Spears's autobiography. So, hmm, told you so moment. Paramount confirms they're not selling B T to Tyler Perry, Byron Allen, or even Diddy for that three billion dollars. Um, it's not happening. It's not happening, y'all. I tried to tell you. I tried to tell y'all. It was never, I don't even think it was ever going to happen, to be honest. But I remember everybody was like, Tyler Perry owned Paramount. I told, I mean, B T. First of all, I told y'all time and time again that that story had no verifiable source. There was no information. And now we officially know that not only did Tyler Perry not buy B T, but Paramount's not even selling anymore. So nobody's going to own the B T stake. It was a conversation that went wild. The media just did whatever. Bad journalists and blogs, really just the bad blogs and these random sites put this story up, and people ran with it, told it. And it's not true. It was never true. And I tried to tell you all this. Listen to journalists, real journalists, people like me, to confirm or deny things like that. That's all. Now, Tyler Perry can do something else. Okay, so The Blind Side, look, I I can't keep up with the toes, the families. Every every time I turn around, there's one detail, one the other. All I'm going to say is, is that it's obvious that whatever conservatorship or money grab that they that that white family have over this black man, whether he knew about it or not, understood it, it's obvious he did not. He's married to a black woman, and I think that since he's got married to his sister, she is not his sister, but this sister in reference. Let me be clear, it's not ancestral. But ever since he got married to this incredible black woman who's lovely and they have lovely kids, it seems as though she started realizing something was funny with the money for him. Now, he's an ex NFL player, and it's and he's got a book apparently coming out, which, you know, interesting. But it's but it seems like this conservatorship situation and this money thing they had, the family just don't seem to be as united. And The Blind Side film has had its issues with white savorism, and we knew this coming in the jump. Now, as far as this whole conversation around taking Sandra Bullock's Oscar and all that, please, y'all. There's other people that deserve to get their Oscars taken based on performances that we ain't even going to get into that they shouldn't have gotten an Oscars based on what we found out about the people that they were portraying. Again, we're not going to go into that. But if you want to take Oscars away from people based on performances, there's some other people that 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 deserves an Oscar to be taken away. But it's a performance, it's acting, y'all. Leave it alone, move on. But I do hope that this 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 ex NFL player, I hope that he gets his chance to really take them to court and really hold them accountable, because I do sense he was getting taken advantage of. And what was horrific about that film in retrospect, which I haven't seen in years, it's been like 10 years since The Blind Side came out. But what I what I remember a lot is that they tried to play him in the movie as if he was very, very mentally delayed, that his social, education, academic skills were weak and poor. And that they really took this, you know, destitute black kid in their house and helped him be a star, believed in them. But in reality, we're finding out that's not necessarily the case. That he was actually bright, he was smart. He was, he wasn't necessarily the way that they filmed him in the movie. But see, a lot of those movies, they overdramatize these scenes to give people more. So Sandra Bullock's character, who in real life, it seems like she's a total nightmare, but in the film, they play her out to be this real thoughtful bomb and everything. It's just terrible what they do. We've seen this with Green Book. We've seen this with a lot of films. And it just is frustrating every time to watch, because we already know what the intentions are when they do films like this. Like, they want to show these positive signs of race relations. And that was a big box office hit, by the way, y'all. It it got nominated for Best Picture at the Academy Awards. You know, it was a lot. It was a lot. So now we're here for Ask Ernest. Let me tell y'all something. I'm going to read this. Now, this Ask Ernest was sent to me, but then apparently, um, in addition to that, there was also information that I um, that 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 some of this has been shared to the public. So you might see this on your timeline um, already. But it went viral, but it came to my desk. I'm going to read it to you. I'm not naming the person. I'm going to read to you all what happened. I'm not going to name the name. I'm going to figure out what y'all have, what y'all want. All right. My sister got married. I was so happy for her and agreed to help her out. She told me that the wedding was child-free, which I understand. So I asked my best friend if there was any way he could watch my son, and he agreed. I arrived at the wedding and found that it was not child-free. There were probably fifteen children there. I was confused, but I didn't want to make a scene, so I waited until my sister came over to me and I asked her what the deal was. What she told me broke my heart, and I don't know how I can look at her the same way again. She confessed that my son was excluded because he has an amputated leg. She said it would draw attention to him at the wedding. I almost lost it. I could understand if he was going to be disruptive or something, but because of that, I didn't, I didn't trust myself in that moment, so I just walked out and went home. When I got home, my son asked me why I was back so early. So I made up some excuse and then spent the rest of the day having fun with him, because it was the only thing keeping me sane. Since I've been getting dozens of messages from people saying how eh, me leaving caused my sister to start crying, and the whole wedding was ruined. But I honestly don't care right now. I'm a mess, I'm a single dad, so I don't have someone to help me right now. But the messages are at, are making me wonder, am I the asshole for leaving the wedding? So, this is an Ask Ernest. This is a guy who told me this story about his child. He had a, he has a son with an amputated leg who is young, he's about twelve years old. The sister is thirty, and he is thirty-two. Um, and so that's the context, she's thirty, he's thirty-two, his son is thirty-two. I mean, twelve years old, sorry, twelve years old. So, this is deep, y'all, this is a very deep Ask Ernest. Um, thank you for sending me this, thank you for asking. Um, no, you're not wrong, you're not wrong. Um, that's a hard, it's a very complicated situation. But I'm gonna say this, though. Wedding culture got some of you straights acting the fuck up. Let me just start the fuck there. You know, I I wanna take time to process this, I wish I understood it from both angles. Uh, uh, the sister apparently cried that he left, apparently it left to stay in the wedding. You know what? Fuck your sister. You're not an asshole here. Your child is your priority, right? You're a father first, above anything else. And if anyone was to disrespect your child and disrespect your child and be ableist as fuck, then that's on them. So you did the right thing as a father to not stay there and to spend time. You accommodated, you made accommodations to make sure your child had childcare, and you probably paid money to do it. And this is a man, this happened to a man. This is so sad, and it's and it's making me a little emotional, I might even cry, I don't know. I'm like, this is sad, because I'm thinking about this little boy, this little black boy, he is twelve years old, he has an amputated leg, you know, it's, you know, and he's, and and it's like you're doing all you can as a father, and then you have a situation like that, that is terrible. So for starters, fuck her and her stupid ass fucking wedding, who gives a fuck? And how disgusting that basically that child's aunt did not want that child there because they thought that was gonna draw attention away from their wedding? Disgusting. Weddings do bring out the worst in people, I must say. As a person who's been married, I can tell you that weddings do bring out the worst in people. Now, let me say this. I was not a bridezilla or groomzilla, whatever, neither was my husband, we were good. But there were people at my wedding, I'm not naming names, that showed their ass in ways that I'm just like, damn, y'all did not have to do all that. But this right here, it's always somebody, i- i- it's, my wedding had a couple of fuck-ups. There are some people that based on what went down at my wedding, it started a situation where I didn't wanna deal with them anymore. And weddings can do that, but let me say this about weddings, though. Don't blame the wedding for it, though. Blame the fact that in reality, people show you who they are, and sometimes it shows up in ways that you can't imagine. I tell people that vacations and trips, weddings, events like that will always show you things. The great thing about the Little Brothers is, we went on vacation, and we then had a lovely time in Baltimore, and we walked out that vacation loving each other even more and better friends. Some people, not so much. Some people can drop some crazy money to go to Miami and celebrate with a bunch of girls that they thought were their friends, only for them people to have their own girls trips to California and show you that they were really friends with those people and not really you, but, you know, I digress, I'm just talking. Uh, but I say all this to say that people show you who they are at these, these moments in your life, and I feel like that's who she really is, and that's how she feels. What she was saying to you is that she's personally embarrassed. What she's saying to you is that she's ableist. What she's saying to you is that this is how she feels about your son, and she feels so much about it that she's so selfish, that she only cares about her, and she doesn't give a fuck about her nephew. Stay far away from her, don't feel bad about what you did, she deserves to feel the shame. Cancel her, because she deserves to feel what she felt for what she did. And to be honest to you, the fact that them kids, them other kids were there, and he was not there, you was like, what's up with that? And I bet you, you knew deep down inside that this possibly, well, let me be clear, at my wedding, there were no children. So, I wanna say that I do know that child-free weddings exist, because I had one, okay? I don't, I don't think kids should be around where adults are drinking, I I'm not that person. So initially, I, it was a child-free one for everybody, but see, if she felt that way, and again, them, her thoughts are disgusting, but if she was really that person, she really should not allow children to come to the wedding. Like, she should have had no children come to keep it even, cuz quite frankly, whether a kid has a leg or not a leg, kids are a lot. Okay, just in general. So, for her to be choosing what kinda kids, like this is Sophie's Choice, you done lost your mind. She done lost her damn mind. So I think she's problematic. You're not an asshole for leaving, because to be honest, children are off limits. I'm big on that, chil- let me be clear, young children are off limits, cuz we're gonna go at Eric Trump and Ivanka Trump for as long as we live, them grown ass people. But, eh, young children, chil- well, first of all, yes, children are off limits. Children under the age of eighteen, off limits. You don't talk about nobody's child, you don't disrespect, you don't exclude, that's that's just, that's just a non-fucking factor. And if this was a woman, y'all, y'all already know this would have ended a different type of way. So for you to just get up and leave, I think that's the best thing you could have did, cuz you could have really went off, and you would have been in your, you would have been in the right to do that. But you leaving was better than staying, because I feel like you were triggered and your boundaries were crossed clearly, and it would have done the same for me. Um, yeah, you did the right thing, I don't think you was wrong, I don't think you're asshole. And for all the family members calling you, trying to shame you, tell them to go fuck themselves, because at the end of the day, if it was their child, what would they would have done? And if they would have stayed and tolerated disrespect, then they don't need to have their children. And I'm going all the way in, because I don't think that was okay. So, don't feel bad, you did the right thing, your sister needs to sit in that discomfort and that pain. Her husband, whoever it is, if he finds out what she did, he might be looking at her sideways, but something is wrong with her. And all these people getting married, doing all this shit, you getting married and shit, and you wanna act brand new and wanna do shit to people that's been rocking with you forever. If you that type of newlywed or newly engaged person, whatever, let me tell you something. Weddings is a sacramental, it's covered between you and the person you're marrying. To be honest, nobody else has to give a fuck, and nobody else needs to give a fuck, to be honest with you. It's between you and that person, you're taking vows. There is this weird culture around weddings, and and to be honest with you, it's the cis heads, child. Cuz as a gay person, baby, my gay wedding was one of the happiest moments of my entire life. It was so fun, it was so joyful. I I didn't have that kinda bullshit, I had some bullshit, but when I think about the bullshit I had, it was with cis heads. Cis heads who couldn't be happy for my wedding because their man had not proposed to them bef- eh, in time. You know, people who had their own insecurities, people that 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 had a divorce, got with a married man, came to my wedding, brought them as a plus-one, and was acting funny the whole time, wanna insert themselves and speak at my wedding and do all this and do all that. Yet, those type of cis heads. Or, you know, the ones who just, you know, like fucking married men, that don't claim them, okay? That also came to my wedding, it was a little funky, okay? So I dealt with all three types of zanies. The ones in relationships with men who were tiptoeing on proposing, that they had to force to propose to. You got the one that 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 literally got married, her man was a hot ass mess. She gets with a married man, they're claiming each other in public and wanna use as a way to showcase their wedding at my, oh, I'm sorry, showcase their relationship at my wedding. And then you got the other one, okay, that literally has no man, don't have a man, but loves to be with married men that came to the wedding and felt uncomfortable. Yes, I've seen those stages of cis head, cis head women at my wedding. And to tell you the truth, you don't know until you experience it, but you gotta clean out your closet, and you gotta get people together. And in this situation, I'm not complaining to, but what I'm saying is, is that that is her problem, not yours. You did the right thing, congratulations, and I'm happy that you are moving forward with all the things that you are gonna be doing. Shout to you. I'm sorry, I just, I don't like, I don't, I don't like, I I, that's what what she did. Unacceptable, unacceptable, I just, yeah, yeah, what a, what a Ask Ernest moment. Okay, so, movies. I haven't been watching too many movies, because I was on vacation, I've been chilling. But, good news, Barbie surpassed The Dark Knight with over five hundred and thirty million dollars to now become Warner Brothers' most successful domestic film of all time. Yes, Barbie, okay? Um, let me say this about this news, because it's a big deal. Barbie, eh, the Barbie, okay, all that marketing that they spent on Barbie did really well. Um, Barbie did really well at the box office. Um, and people are really, you know, it it really did its thing. And a lot of people were, you know, wondering was this gonna be, what what was gonna happen and all this stuff. But it it, Barbie did really, really well. Um, so I'm 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 happy to see the buzz around this film. Um, a lot of people seem to really like it. Um, you know, I I enjoyed it, I thought it was good, you know, I have no qualms with it. Um, it's been the, every weekend for the past four back-to-back weekends, Barbie was on with the box office. This past weekend, Blue Beetle has surpassed it. Um, by only a couple of millions of dollars, to be honest. And this is also Warner Brothers' film, but Warner Brothers is killing this summer at the box office. Um, Blue Beetle came in this weekend, is the number one film, but Barbie has had four consecutive. Barbie now has a domestic, uh, box office of five hundred and sixty-seven million dollars. Worldwide, one point two billion dollars. And those numbers are just incredible. This is a, what's great about this movie is that it's it's such, um, you know, um, you know, it it's it's a rated PG thirteen film, it's about two hours long. It's only been out for four weeks, and it's done this well. Um, but it's 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 impressive, the Barbie film is killing it. Um, so I'm I'm looking at some stuff right now. Um, so, right now Barbie is the the fifteenth highest grossing domestic film of all time. But it looks like in the next couple of weeks, it will definitely, I mean, the numbers are so close, that it has the potential of being, hmm. I don't know, I don't think it's gonna get into the top ten. It would need to have like a hundred million more dollars to be in the top ten. Because right now, the top ten film, the lowest top ten film is Jurassic World with six hundred and fifty-three million dollars. And then before that is Jurassic Park, no, no, Titanic, six hundred and seventy-four million. Then Av- Avengers: Infinity War, six hundred and seventy-eight million. Number seven is Avatar: The Way of Water, six hundred and eighty-four million. Black Panther is number six with seven hundred million. Top Gun Maverick, number five, seven hundred and eighteen million. Avatar, the original one, nu- number four with seven hundred and eighty-five million. Spider-Man: No Way Home is number three with eight hundred and fourteen million. Number two was Avengers: Endgame with eight hundred and fifty-eight million. And Star Wars is number one with nine hundred and thirty-six million dollars. This is the domestic gross, by the way. Now, let me tell you what's also interesting. I just sidebar, first of all, James Cameron, okay, stop playing with James Cameron. James Cameron has three of his films, Titanic, Avatar, and Avatar: The Way of Water, in the top ten of all-time box office grosses, okay? Nobody's fucking with James Cameron, okay, as a director, as an extraordinaire. It it's a lot, it's a lot. So, I am just going to put that out there. Um, but, back to my other things. So, Tubi films, y'all are talking about Tubi, y'all, what the hell? Tubi is fun, Tubi, let me just say this, Tubi is a channel with a lot of, like, hmm, you know, I guess made to, okay, I'm just gonna say this, made to DVD films, but is, they're not DVD, cuz there's no DVD. But these are films that's only streaming, they're not gonna ever be in a movie theater, but they're hood classics, and a lot of people are like, making them. So in Philly, there's a filmmaker named Jimmy DeSaint, some of his movies are on Tubi or Tubi, and they're interesting. There's also some really great Nigerian films that are like, not good, but good. They're bad good, they're like filled with stereotypes and like, things that are like random stories of deaths and killing, the shootings, the violence, the sex, all of it is wild on Tubi. They're basically Tyler Perry films with like the same bad wigs, bad acting, but they don't have any mainstream stars as much. Until recently. So I watched Rock the Boat, which is a new film that's on Tubi that you can check out. It features the acting debut of T.I.N.T.I.N.E.'s daughter. Now, she's adorable, I think her name is Onisha, Azunisha, it's a, it's an interesting film. But all these films are like, like random films that honestly, look, if you're just trying to have a day where you're just like working, and you just want something silly on, that take your mind away from all the the craziness in the world, I highly recommend it, it wasn't that bad. I enjoy bad films, sometimes I don't wanna wanna be so, you know, caught up in sus- suspenseless. Sometimes I just wanna watch shit that's just dumb with bad plot holes and bad twists. You know, it it serves its purpose. I I sometimes, I think I found myself more amused by how extreme, how bad they are, that it's actually good. I can't describe it, but it's so funny. Um, but highly recommended, um, you know, check them out, it's it's cute. As far as music goes, Ciara's new album, C.C., is a dud. I didn't like it, and you know what, I'm not surprised. She came through with a Chris Brown remix, she got this new song with Lil Baby. Honestly, it's not that it's a, they're bad, I just, okay, I just feel like the album is dated. Everything about this this era is feeling like it's very throwback and nostalgic. But I don't need too much nostalgia right now from all these R&B artists. Some of them a little premature nostalgic, I don't know, or are we just getting old? I mean, Ciara's album, Goodies, I think is about to be twenty years old in this couple of years. So I guess this is old school for us, maybe we are getting grown and old. Maybe I am not realizing that these the a- artists who, like Ciara is gorgeous, right? She's ageless, like even Usher. Like, I just feel like because Beyonce and all these artists age really well, as is people, you know, it's almost like they don't wanna retire, they don't wanna just go away. But some of that is working for some people and not for other people. I feel like Ciara is like that artist where no one's asking for this music, but she just keeps putting it out cuz she has nothing else to do. I don't know, just be, just take the money, girl, enjoy life. Um, Kiki and Usher did a song together, Usher got a song with Boyfriend, song is causing drama. Her ex doubts him, is talking about he wants to be an actor. How convenient that he wants to go into acting allegedly, even though, you know, no shade, but he wants to be an actor even though actors on strike, how convenient. That's still what they said, he says the press, all these rumors and stuff, he hasn't told anybody anything. Sure jam. But Darius Dalton is trying to live his best life, he's trying to move away from all this controversy. Kiki is on her petty tip right now, she did some with Usher, that's got the girls talking. Honestly, I'm over this storyline. It was funny when it was funny, but now at this point, I don't care. Kiki, baby, look, love happens, life happens, be your best self, have fun. Fuck that boy, and honestly, I don't know. Like, I just, I I I love Kiki, I think Kiki is is one of few people out here who has the talent. She has the range, she can act, she can sing, she can dance, like, do your thing, girl. Like, all this other stuff with this boy, we, who cares? But I mean, we're talking about it, right? So I guess she's, you know, she's riding that wave, but I just don't want this to become Kiki's. I think she's going through a breakup, clearly something's going on one, and she's putting in art and crafts and hustling and doing her thing. But, at some point, some things don't need to be a hustle, some things don't require a response to the public. Sometimes you don't owe us that, and I'm starting to realize as I get older, how much I'm realizing that. Like, celebrities do not owe us explanations for every fucking thing, y'all, we, we're not entitled to them in that way. Um, I mean, clearly, if they're, got a criminal lawsuit like Lizzo, some, or a lawsuit, a lawsuit in general, any allegations, I mean, yeah, they need to respond to that. But it's funny how celebrities don't respond to things we want them to, but respond to everything else. Interesting. But yeah, lots to take in there, but the song is cute, the video is very cute. I like the throwback to the You Ain't Have to Call outfit and everything, that was genius, Usher's, ah, love it. Now, as far as TV goes, um, I'm really feeling the new Love and Hip-Hop Miami. See, when I'm getting in Love and Hip-Hop Miami, the first episode just dropped this past week, is what I thought I was gonna get in Atlanta now, Atlanta is consistently good. Like I told you, I'm really loving this year's Love and Hip-Hop Atlanta storyline. But Miami's got the rip from the headlines drama. Like, it's like, there's stuff I've been seeing on the blogs, and I'm like, oh shit. So, news, breaking news, Safari and Amara Negra are dating? They have a little thing going on, it's true? They have a little thing going on, it's true, but I'm sitting here looking like, but Safari? I'm watching an episode of You and Love and Hip Hop in Atlanta and apparently the girls are fighting now. Erica, Erica, Erica. There's Erica Mina, Erica Banks, and, 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 um, Erica, what's that, Erica? Erica Mina, Erica Banks, and Erica Dixon. Erica Dixon is the baby mama of Little Scrappy. Erica Mina is the ex-wife of Safari. And Erica Banks is the love interest of any of the rappers that I just named. She's a rapper herself. She had the song Bust It, little cute little one-hit wonder is giving, but she's on the show arguing with the girls, having fights. Anywho, on the last episode of Love and Hip Hop Atlanta, which also came out the same week, I believe Love and Hip Hop Miami's on Mondays and Love and Hip Hop Atlanta is on Tuesdays. Interesting scheduling, but it's lo- lots of Love and Hip Hop is back. But anyhow, on A- Atlanta, they were talking about how Safari was trying to talk to Erica Mina's friend Ciara. And Ciara, of course, was not interested in him. Her friend Bambi, who is Little Scrappy's ex-wife, who is beefing with Erica Dixon, basically was not aware this was going on, but Ciara confessed it. Now I'm hearing that Ciara is no longer friends, and her name is Ciara Gates. I'm hearing that Ciara is no longer friends with Bambi or Erica Mina anymore, but I think they think it's because of her talking about Safari. Now, on the side, Erica Mina said that her and Safari, even though she's been dragging that man, name, that man's name in the mud, talking about he don't pay child support, he don't do this, he don't do that. Apparently it's about to be some fighting because apparently he's handling his business and Erica has been saying otherwise in the press, but at the same time, she's still sleeping with him and messing with him at, from time to time. My whole thing with Erica is if Erica, and I'm talking about Erica Mina, who, a hot mess. If, if Safari was all these things, then why are you still sleeping with him or what's still sleeping with him? Why are you still playing these games? Child bye. But even more games, Safari isn't in Miami with Eric, with, with Amara Negra and they're messing around. It seems like Safari is basically everybody's toy, just like the way Rich Dollars used to be on the shows. Like Rich Dollars was on all the Love and Hip Hops, dating all the girls. He was just passed around. But Safari has literally been passed around every single Love and Hip Hop, like New York, he was in New York for five seconds. They thought him and Juju, Camerons, ex-girlfriend had a thing, which apparently did not. Then he was in, he's in Atlanta with Erica Mina being a husband. Then he was in Hollywood messing around with, um, with, um, Mickey Baby, when she was messing around with another woman and he had that drama going on. Now he's in Miami with Ma- Amara Negra. Listen, VH1, Paramount, y'all cutting Safari a check to be a whole clown. And even though Safari is a true clown, he's a, a hung clown that's being passed around on all the Love and Hip Hop franchises. I don't remember the last person that got passed around like that, I feel like was Rich Dollars. Like Rich Dollars was dating everybody. Remember Monique Slaughter in New York and he had all the different girls and stuff? Rich Dollars dead, had, had, had his moments. Uh, oh, and Cisco too. Cisco done hopped around too. New York, Hollywood and stuff. The, the, the Creep Squad, all of them were the hoes of it all. Creep Squad is no longer around um, because New York is no longer here and Hollywood's no longer here, and now it's just Atlanta and Miami, but it's been interesting, to say the least. So that's going on. I've been watching Justin Cabaret. I'm watching this show and in my mind, I'm just like, why is Justin still on this show? Why are y'all still watching Justin's Cabaret? Wh- what is wrong with y'all? Like, not watching. No, 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 no. Why are these girls still going on the show? My whole thing is people say, oh, I shouldn't watch it, is this, is that. No, these girls are getting paid, this is TV. I'm gonna watch it to the end, but I, every time I watch this show lately, this past, these past episodes, I'm like, why are these girls still on this show? But anything for clout, anything for fame, I suppose, okay? So that's this episode. What's coming up this week, for those who are keeping up, the Online News Association is having their national convention in Philadelphia this week. So I'll be at O N A doing some dope things. So if you are an O N A person, a member of the Online News Association, if you're in Philadelphia, I'll be there at the Downtown Marriott that's hosting the convention. The biggest digital online journalism organization, association in the country is going down at O N A, okay? Um, also, the P A B J Pool Party, now that's a private party. Um, to those people who were invited, um, if you're going, let me know ASAP because I'm about to close down the invitations. So if I gave you an invitation and you're listening to this podcast, um, I need you to DM me your email address or just tell me that you're coming so I can have you on the list, so I can confirm you. You know who you are, Candace, okay? Y'all know who y'all are, Elena, let me know. Um, also, and let me sidebar the P A B J Pool Party, I cannot say the location, but I'll tell y'all in the next episode. Um, but also, the Philly Book Crawl, y'all don't, I don't know if y'all noticed, but I'm one of the people who's helping to organize this event. I've been running social media and doing a promo, um, with the lovely, incredible, impeccable Eric Smith, who is a big, big, big book guy in Philly. The Philly Book Crawl is happening this upcoming Saturday. Please go to our Instagram page, the, at Philly Book Crawl to get more details. Um, the Philly Book Crawl, this is the first, like, major book crawl of its kind in Philadelphia. It is Philly Book Crawl, I'm sorry, PhillyBookstoreCrawl.com. PhillyBookstoreCrawl.com. I will be around, okay, on Saturday. This will take place on Saturday, August twenty-sixth. It's free to the public. Come through, buy books. I'll be at different bookstores signing copies of my books, okay? Of The Case for Counselor Culture. If you have not gotten a signed copy, come see me because I'm gonna be there. Now, let me tell you where I'm gonna be on the book tour, I'm on the Book Crawl, cuz I wanna make sure people know this. Because I don't want nobody to be left behind. So a lot of you all have been seeing all this good stuff around with Harriet's. Harriet's is coming back and I will be there, okay? Harriet's is open, come around noon, okay? The Paris-inspired reopening at Harriet's is going to be there, the book, at the Book Store Crawl. Please let people know. She's there, so, so she's been in Paris for a while. Um, the owner, uh, Janine Cook. Janine Cook is the owner of Harriet's and she also owned Ida's bookstore in there. She has a store called Josephine's in Paris. She's been there promoting it for several weeks. But the cool thing is, is that I will be at The Case for Counselor Culture, I'm sorry, I will be at Harriet's um, around noon, noon on, uh, I'll be there around noon on this Saturday. And there's a Paris-themed situation. I'll be signing copies of my book there. If you wanna catch me there, come catch me around noon at the Philly Book Store Crawl. It's gonna be lit, it's gonna be dope. Um, she hasn't been there this entire summer for like six weeks because she's been in Paris. So for those people that's been wanting to get your books bought and get your books signed, I will be at the Philly Book Store Crawl, um, with her. So please check it out. It's gonna be dope. I'll be making other appearances at other bookstores around the area. There's all types of good stuff happening, so just make sure you come and show love and show out, you know, cuz it's gonna be a good old time. And as always, be well and be best.
Earnestly Speaking is recorded in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania and can be found on Apple Podcasts, Google Podcasts. To stay up to date with the latest on the show, follow me on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram, at Mr. Ernest Owens. Use the hashtag EarnestlySpeaking to tell me what you thought about this episode and check out my website at earnestowens.com.